Welcome to November 7th Planning Commission Meeting. Tonight, continuation of our last month's meeting. We have two open items for discussion. One is the petition that's brought in front of us for change of zone on the North Sea Road corridor from Village Business District, which is presently zoned Office District and has a combination of Office District and Highway Business District, but mostly Office District, to County Road 39 corridor. I know I was not here last month, but there were some brief discussions on this and Mr. Beau Robinson, who is a property owner on this corridor, has prepared a presentation for us. I'll give the floor to you Beau, so you can enlighten us.
Thank you very much, CMAC. I'd like to review briefly what was discussed at the last meeting and then embellish and provide some more details for the board with regard to that discussion. I would just ask that if you would hold your comments and questions until the end of my presentation, that I might finish that and I'll be led to discuss anything with you after that and answering the questions. This is a proposal to establish a special exception overlay zone basically along the Office District and Highway Business Corridor of North Sea Road from County Road 39 to the North End Graveyard. The reason for the proposal is my belief that the Office District Zone is no longer serves as a functional asset to the village, that the assets, being the properties located along that road, are diminished in value because of it and due to the changing nature of business and specifically office-type business with the ascendancy of the Internet, teleconferencing, et cetera, that the need for offices is diminished now and will continue to diminish as time goes by. I have the three sectional maps here for you to look at. Everything in green would be included in the proposal and it's my suggestion that the zone, the zoning overlay, follow the property lines. As you know, in part of the Office District on the east-sided street between County Road 39 and Willow Street, there's a 200-foot depth to that zone. But if you can see, for instance, with this parcel here, which is the doctor's office, I don't really see any need to continue that 200 feet because it's now surrounded on two sides or it's boarded on two sides by property owned by the town of Southampton under the Preservation Fund and I don't think it does any detriment to the easterly parcel to have that extend that far. So these are the parcels along here. You have the Gulf Station, Southampton Tire, McDonald's, the bank, a museum, and the Clan Man Complex, an east side 7-Eleven, doctor's office, another doctor's office, spa, a broker's office, and a law office. In section five, there's a house on the east side and my co-petitioner Anthony Punnitt's property, excuse me, a house and the tick control business. And then south of the railroad tracks adjoining them is the co-petitioner Anthony Punnitt's property across from the National Grid. So you have a very mixed use of this whole street, everywhere from railroad right-of-way and the National Grid Yard to fast food, a conventional restaurant, and various other retail businesses. These properties here are the Lynch Properties. They own four of them. This is my piece. Across the street, there's an office, two houses, one of which is now for sale, the Schmitz Market property with the house, public house, the post office, which is owned by the federal government, so that's out of this jurisdiction, but probably one of the most intense retail uses in America when they're functioning. Dr. Esau's property, Hampton State Bank, We Associates, John Bennett's office, and then the two offices here, and then the Lowell Prentice Park. In what I call the triangle, you have English Country Antiques, Kathleen King's Bakery, vacant lot, a retail store, and two houses. So on the second page, you'll see the proposal, and that is to create the special exception overlay zone. Sorry, the special exception didn't come out correctly spelled, which I propose to follow the property lines. Your board may have some issues or concerns on that or discussion later. And then the critical part of this whole proposal are the dimensional setbacks. And as you're aware, in a village business district like ours and in our code, the setbacks for the front yard and the side yards are zero. So that creates this wall-like phenomenon of stores which benefits pedestrian traffic by intensifying the uses and also is a safety issue with fire. I am proposing to not, the purpose of the overlay zone is to basically keep the setbacks for the Office District because North Sea Road now has a sort of green, a little more laid-back expansive appearance to it with the setbacks of the various buildings. That could be kept by having the overlay zone, excuse me, by keeping the Office District setbacks, but I propose to modify them a little bit simply by reducing the front yard to 30 feet, reducing the total side yards to 45, and then making the transition yard the same as the rear yard, which would be 30 feet.
But Beau, if you could remind us, this reduction from 30 for front and 45 for the side, what is the existing?
It's the chart in the back, CMAC. The, as you're going to remember from my presentation, last time, the initial 1930 zoning code provided that this area south of Hillcrest would be all commercial and commercial included retail sales. In the 1963 zoning amendment, the district actually was expanded to include the east side, it went as far as the east side of North Main Street, which is a considerable expansion eastward from what it is now. In the 1974 code, the zone was changed to the Office District, which it is now, and it has remained that way since that time. And I would assert that since that change, that the street has remained relatively unchanged. Basically, you have the same types of businesses there 40 years ago. There's been only two office buildings built in that time. One has been vacant for four years, another is a local law office. But what has happened is that the then-existing businesses, like the nursery, have expanded. And those, about the only viable businesses along that street, are the ones that are At the present time, I've done some statistics and I ran the linear distances of these properties along the street. If you measure the linear distances, and there's a little bit of ambiguity because how do you calculate the Lynch Nursery property and a few other things like that, but basically on both sides of the street, given the total linear distance of 6,148 feet, 53% of that is retail, either non-conforming or expansion of a non-conforming retail use.
On one side of this?
Both sides. On the west side, it's 75%. So the street is fundamentally retail as it is now, excuse me, as it has been, notwithstanding the fact that the Office District Code was changed. And I have that statistic for you in the pamphlet that I handed out to you all. I've gone through the necessity for the expansion of retail sales, that it serves a need for the community, that the Office District Zone is not as necessary, if at all that it ever was, that we need to have a critical amount of retail business in the community to serve not only the community, but to keep people coming into the village. This fosters all of the above. And on top of that, I've been aware of the fact that the, I don't exactly know how, who engaged this firm, but the Gibbs Planning Group submitted a report based upon, I think, something with, either conjunction with the Southampton Association or the trustees in March, in which it concluded in its first sentence that the village could accept or accommodate an additional 109,100 square feet of retail space. And I'll give you a couple of statistics on that. As you know, in the code, you have to have one parking space for every 180 square feet of retail space or office space. It's the same thing. 109,000 square feet of additional space would create or necessitate 606 parking spaces. Does anybody know how many parking spaces there are from Hampton Road on Main Street to Meeting House Lane? It's 134. That's not even a quarter of what the parking spaces would be required for an additional 109,000 square feet. That area alone, if the spaces were 10 by 20 feet, would be three zoning acres. And then if you include, that's without the islands, access, ingress, or egress, or alleys. If you included all those, you'd probably need another six acres, another three acres for a total of six acres' worth of land just for the parking alone. So the 109,000 feet represents, to me, a statistic that if the whole area was zoned village business and built out as village business, it would have a hard time accommodating that amount of square footage. As it is now, for example, my property is 28,000 square feet. That would accommodate an office building of 3,500 feet. The doctor's office south of that is a 6,000-square-foot building and that's been vacant for several years. So those two properties alone would only generate 9,000 square feet of space. My property, 28,000 feet, generating an office building of 3,500 feet, it would take 31 of them to absorb the 109,000 square feet. That would be roughly 22 acres' worth of land. And I've calculated, based upon the map statistics, that for the contiguous parcels to North Sea Road, there's only 28 acres of land with all of them together that we're talking about. We're talking about 47 pieces of individual land from one road to the other, to the North End Graveyard. So the other issue I have for you to present is that somebody could say, well, why the North Sea Road corridor? Should that be changed? And my conclusion after reviewing the maps are that really the North Sea corridor is the only place that could accommodate additional retail space. One could intensify the Village Business District here under certain circumstances, but that doesn't change the parking requirements or the fact that basically the Village Business area is already built out. And it's also ringed and locked in by the residential zones around it. The North Sea Road corridor is the only place that represents the opportunity to change the zone and still basically retain it the way it is because it's underdeveloped. The Hampton Road Office District Corridor east of Pine Street, I would say, is undesirable to expand retail space there because that maintains a very campus-green-like residential appearance and it's just not suitable to try and convert that into any kind of retail space. The parking issues alone would be difficult and as said, it's still a very nice, almost pristine area of the village, again, underutilized, but still nevertheless a very nice way to come into the village. And I think this therefore is the best way to do it. Traffic issues, I did try and get some information from the Institute of Traffic Engineers. There's very little information available on anything like this because it's really relatively small. They're focused more on shopping centers of a, you know, a couple hundred thousand feet. They're not looking at things like this. But I would say the following, that is, the Gibbs Group proposed this. It described, as you'll see in my document, that the traffic access along North Sea Road is excellent, and it didn't make any recommendations to deal with the infrastructure of the road or any comment that the traffic might be a problem. So I would say that based on an interpretation of that, that in its consideration of the use of the word excellent for that traffic ingress and egress, that Gibbs feels that this could be switched over and not have any significant impact on traffic. Also, I think that the businesses that will be attracted to this area are not the type that would normally be involved with the standard Main Street type of businesses of boutiques, personal item stores, jewelry stores, et cetera, et cetera. This is more prone to a furniture type of business, maybe a large grocery store, something like that, but it's going to be an area where you're not going to have pedestrian traffic due to the separation of building and the fact that there's only one sidewalk along that street. And it's just never developed that way and it probably never will be. And I think it's much more likely that somebody is going to say to themselves, if they're looking for an appliance, that they're not going to say, let's go look at air conditioners and while we're doing that, let's stop by the post office and get the mail. They're much more likely to say, we'll get the mail and on the way back, we'll stop off and look at an air conditioner. So that a lot of the traffic that would be possibly increased by this change will already be on that road. Another aspect of this whole thing is that, you know, when this zone was changed in 1974, nobody knew what an ATM was. But that has now been installed in that bank and from the research that the planning board did with the Bridge Hampton National Bank, when that came in on Hampton Road, we know that ATMs generate a lot of traffic. So it's not just easy to say that, well, this is Office District and it's only going to generate a certain amount of traffic because those uses change. So I think that overall, the zone lends itself to this. There is space available, the space is needed, it's the best place in the village to do it, and I hope that you would favorably consider recommending this in basically the central form with regard to whatever dimensional numbers you want to change or suggest differently to the trustees. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this application or should I just call it an application, this proposal?
I would.
Could you state your name?
I'm Anthony Punnitt. I'm property owner, 200 North Sea Road. It's the brick building on the corner, the northeast corner of North Sea Road and Prospect Street. And I just wanted to come and really, you know, lend my support to this proposal. I want to, I really, I can't stress enough what an incredible economic obsolescence the Office District classification is. We've owned this building for a number of years and for several years, we had it available for sale and had a lot of interest. You know, the building has a very unique history. It's very unique in its construction and its architecture. It used to be the power station for Long Island Lighting 100 years ago. That's what it was built for. After that, it became a coal yard where when people used to heat their homes with coal, they would come there and purchase coal. There was old railway tracks leading from the train station into the building where I think the coal would come in and it was a coal yard. And then after that, I think in the 50s, it became offices for a law firm. And then in 1973, when I guess the Office District was created, the building was basically frozen in time to be an office building in spite of the fact that previous to that, it had a variety of different commercial uses. And the rest of the street is really a mixed-use sort of district with a variety of uses. And the ones that are thriving are the ones that have been able to retain their grandfathered right to continue to operate as a retail business. As Beau said, there's been very little new construction there. I mean, to me, it's a time capsule. We had a lot of interest when it was on the market. All the interest was from people who could not do what they wanted to do there. Case in point, we had a very well-known supermarket chain approach us. They liked the size of the building, the scale is 5,500 square feet on ground floor space. They love the off-street parking. They love the access off North Sea Road near the highway and the fact that it was very near the village center. They made a very strong offer. When we told them that it was Office District, obviously, they lost interest. They were not willing to wait around while we tried to lobby the Planning Commission or the trustees or anything, rightly so. These people have since gone on to assemble a small package of shops on Hampton Road where they're going to open their shop and we'll see how that works out. I don't know. I was driving around there today on a rainy Wednesday in the middle of November and there was hardly any parking spaces either in front or in the back. So it's too bad that we couldn't do that. I think that that would have been a tremendous asset to the village. So since then, we spent a fortune renovating the building, the thinking being that, well, at least if we can offer highly finished office space, we'll have a better chance of attracting some good tenants, office tenants. And we completed the renovation back in June and the building is two-thirds vacant. And I've received a tremendous amount of interest. Of course, I always do. People love the building. Can't rent to almost anybody that calls because of this classification, the fact that we just don't have the right, people don't have the right to operate any sort of retail use out of this building. I've been approached from several people who have been long-term owners of businesses on Main Street, whose leases are up and are facing big rent increases and they're leaving and they would love to move their businesses to this building. Can't rent to them. And it's just a shame. You know, the building lends itself perfectly to this. The whole street lends itself perfectly to the kind of use that the tenants on the inner village are allowed to do. It's a different sort of parcel. I don't see it even competing with those spaces on Main Street and Jobbs Lane because those are mostly 600-square-foot shops, 900-square-foot shops with none of their own parking. We're offering something very different. It's a large building with off-street parking. Got a huge parking lot there. It will never be filled, you know, with what we have there. I mean, I don't know, I just can't stress enough that the Office District really needs modifications to allow us to be able to rent to the type of people that are interested in being over there.
Is there any other appeals for variance for use?
For a variance for use? I've been told that it is impossible because the way the code is structured, it doesn't allow for a variance under the way it's written. Am I not right about that? There is no avenue to be able to appeal to them for a variance.
And by the way, CMAC, of course, with the special exception zone here, that would, all those would go to the Board of Appeals, which gives that board the opportunity to make any last-minute modifications or last-moment modifications to any proposal that comes along.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Anthony.
Good evening, Gilbert G. Flanagan. I represent several of the people who have properties on that street, including Mr. Punnitt and also the doctors who have had the building right next to the bank that's been empty for three or four years. I can say that the same thing has happened to them. They have been approached by countless people and every, virtually every meaningful offer has been an offer for some kind of retail use. I think it was important to note, as Beau pointed out, that we're not here talking about a zoning change, in other words, making this village business or making it highway business. This is an overlay district with special exceptions which you and the trustees could have evolved to see that would be suitable. So it would give you a lot of control, but it would give us all the flexibility that we need. And I can tell you from all the years I've practiced in this village that there's always has been and still is a glut of office space. For years, I know the Flying Point Office Park was mostly empty. There are a number of other stores and buildings that are empty which are office uses. So I agree that the time has come to make some adjustments to this. And I think that this is an excellent way to do it because it gives you the flexibility to limit the kinds of uses, but it also gives the property owners some relief. And as far as use variances go, I agree with my colleagues here that it's virtually impossible to obtain a use variance. A classic example is a house surrounded on three sides by gas stations. You need something that severe before you could expect to get a use variance. So I would encourage you to take this thing further and if I can be of any assistance and guide the process, I'll be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you, Beau.
If I may, my name is John Bennett and I own the, it's EIA Associates. It's a two-provoking, it's my law office and the two light industrial buildings in the back.
John is here.
And the way that property has made economic sense, to be quite frank with you, is because there are the two pre-existing non-conforming industrial uses in the back, number one. And number two, I use it myself, the portion in the front for the law office. But I'm not really, as here, I'm not really here to talk as much about my property as much as I am about that corridor as a whole. And it's depressed because it's underutilized. Just a couple of things. Zoning generally is supposed to follow when it can establish uses. That's a pretty basic tenet of zoning law. You find that not only in the zoning treatises, but you know, you find that in case law. And it certainly hasn't, and this is primarily a retail, certain exceptions, one of my office being one, but in the back, there, I have pre-existing non-conforming uses. But this is a retail corridor and it was zoned Office District. I think it's pretty clear, if you look at the zoning map for the village of Southampton in the early 70s, it was almost like a stopgap measure. We're just going to create a lot of Office District regardless of the user. Or maybe the vision was that there would be a lot of more offices, but you just have to talk to realtors to understand that there's a huge glut of Office District in the village, which means that you have substantial portions of real property in the village that are underutilized. And zoning, everyone forgets, is supposed to, is supposed to increase, zoning, the whole purpose of zoning is to increase property values. When it becomes too restrictive and it becomes, it doesn't recognize the existing uses in the area, then it becomes a negative. The doctor's office to a couple of lots to the north of me has been dormant for at least four or five years. I've been approached by clients about that building, as I was with Mr. Punnitt's building, many uses, people, in particular, Mr. Punnitt's building, love the building, has a huge amount of charm. You can see, it wants to be a retail use, can't happen, and it's unfortunate because that's really what it wants to be. So zoning is supposed to follow established uses when it can, when it uses when it can. It hasn't been done in this instance. The other thing that's very important is what's being, this is hardly an aggressive approach because the whole idea is give the boards the flexibility to explore other type of uses. We don't know, we know that the Office District is simply not working. And if the boards have the ability to put in a use which will not be, will not be a generator of an excess amount of traffic and will benefit the whole sense of place of that corridor, which is really lacking now, they should do that. I mean, I think this, I think this village has lost a lot of opportunity on that corridor. Many years ago, I sat here in a zoning board of appeals meeting and McDonald's wanted, I think they wanted another 15, 20 spaces and the board was saying, no, no, no. And I just wanted to get up and say, you have this fantastic opportunity. Tell them you want the 15 extra chairs or tables. Make it look like the McDonald's in Matatuck. You know, it looks now like a, this is the oldest English settlement in the state of New York and you walk in and you see a very suburban 70s fake mansard roof, unattractive McDonald's, but no one took the opportunity to say to these people, you want a little bit of expansion? We'll make it something more attractive. This corridor needs, it needs life. It's not going to get the life as an Office District Zone. And again, you have the ability to control with this overlay district. So I thank you for being patient and hearing my comments.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Before we open it up for discussion, I'd like to just give a little brief history of planning commission's involvement as far as Office District and Village Business District zoning. We have been actively pursuing this thing for the past, I'd say, easily seven, eight years, if not longer. This basically was initiated by a number of major institutions in the village center leaving the center of the village. As was mentioned, the post office being one of them, the parish museum was another. Earlier on, Rogers Memorial Library, which was on the corner of Jobbs Lane and Main Street, moved to Windmill Lane, still the center and heart of the village, but still the center and heart of the village, but perceived as the other side of the world as far as the village business district is considered, or walkability or accessibility is concerned. And we have the history of Main Street and Jobbs Lane, which date back to hundreds and hundreds of years, versus Windmill Lane and Nugent, which are the more recent post-war developments. And these post-war developments are not in the same scale or activity that we see on Main Street and Jobbs Lane. To that extent, with the abandonment of some of these major institutions and lack of development on the areas that did lend itself to development on Nugent and Windmill, we undertook a master plan study to project what the future of the village business district wants to be. Brought in a firm, architectural and urban design firm, which did a master plan urban design for us. We established objectives as to what this growth should entail for the next 50 or so years. And just last year, we voted the first set of zoning laws, architectural guidelines, that redefined zoning and development on the village business district, Nugent and Windmill being primarily the focus of this redevelopment, with the preservation of Main Street and Jobbs Lane, the byproduct of that new zoning. And of course, the motor was to learn from the old, to learn what Main Street and Jobbs Lane is providing for the village and deduct from that and express from that development onto the newer parcels, which are larger parcels in the village, by the way. Windmill Lane and especially Nugent Lane have properties that are larger in scale and size compared to Main Street and Jobbs Lane. Another example of development that was not very much appreciated in the heart of the village was the redevelopment of the supermarket, which turned into CVS with the parking. And that's a major intersection in the heart of the village. And one of the main notions of that was actually rather than having suburban-style mall developments where buildings sit back on the property with parking in front to bring the buildings onto the street with the parking in the back and break the scale of the buildings, the massing of the buildings to reflect, even though it could be one large building under one use in a larger property, but to reflect the scale and architecture of the older Southampton. This was primarily undertaken to spur and help development of retail. And to that extent, even we introduced some new uses such as hotel in the heart, hotel and residential living on the upper floors in the heart of the village. We, a number of times, we were presented with questions, what's the boundary of the center of the village or your study area? Even though the office district goes beyond this four-square block of Main, Jobbs, Nugent, and Windmill, village business does go beyond that area. We, our answer was mostly that we will look at this thing as a smaller-scale laboratory and learning from that, we will project it onto other areas of the village business district. And again, we were focusing on the village business district and not the office district at the time, even though they share certain components and certain typologies and uses. Since going ahead and adopting the architectural guidelines, a number of other issues have confronted the village. One of the, one of the main ones has been the need, or the perceived need of additional supermarkets in the heart of the village. We have one supermarket. We originally had maybe up to four or five supermarkets in the village center, four supermarkets for sure, operating at the same time. Today, that's been limited to one main supermarket and Schmidt Market, having a smaller one. Another one is possibly opening up soon. But this so-called demand for additional supermarket has led to development proposals outside the village center, primarily the Takahoe District area down McGee and County Road 39 for 60,000, 70,000 square foot supermarket with additional retail attached to that in actually the town of Southampton, which would fall right on the boundary of the village's border to the north of the village on the highway. We, the planning commission did make strong recommendations to the trustees to petition the town against this project primarily. The reason, of course, one of the primary reasons was that by expanding this type of retail development outside the north and heart of the village, that the village would eventually die by not being a sustainable retail center and that people would, such as what happened with Riverhead, start shifting and having their retail activities outside the village, or town of Riverhead in that sense, and not visit the village and walk around and shop around in that sense. And to that extent, there was a search or there was a need to identify lots or locations within the village business district or village office district for the possibility of development of additional supermarket. The village did entertain, or actually I'd say that property owners down Hampton Road did petition the village at the intersection of Hampton Road and County Road 39, which is again a office district, Hampton Road. They petitioned the village and the village entertained the idea of creating again a overlay district for a supermarket on Hampton Road at the highway business section of it, not the office district portion of it. And the highway business district of the village are mostly lots that either line up the County Road 39 or are in very close proximity to it. There are limited number of lots available. The supermarket, a special exception again, had all sorts of other requirements that would limit the number of lots that would fall or be acceptable as a supermarket, such as the size of it, again, specific location of it, and the scale and cap on the size of the supermarket, which was no more than 20,000 square feet, nothing close even to the scale of the Takahoe development, which is close to at 1.100,000 and scaled back to about 70, 75, 80,000 square feet of retail activity. As Bo mentioned, historically, Hampton Road has entertained retail activity, even though that has not been zoned, that area hasn't been zoned for retail. I'd like to open up the discussion between the board members and if anybody wants to volunteer. Otherwise, I'll start from one on the table. Mark?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think it's a very thorough presentation from Bo.
Thank you.
I think it's a good historical study and I think it's very interesting. And I agree also that this corridor needs, something needs to be done about this corridor. It's an important corridor. But one thing actually, and Gil Flanagan offered maybe to help and to, what would be interesting to see is which other avenue is there to, instead of creating a special exception overlay, which other zoning avenue in terms of regulation, there would be to possibly allow the kind of development that we want to see, whether it's maybe a commercial overlay or retail overlay or something. We'd like to see what other possibility there would be. The second point that I have, since anyone interrupted you in your presentation, was the comment that you talked about traffic. I think that here I would differ with you. I think that the traffic engineers has a lot of valuable information on how to be able to put together a traffic study. And I think that the railroad bridge is definitely a real bottleneck, that if there were substantial development and in that zone, the way you're showing even on your, there is potential for consolidation of the properties. Your own property is right next to the nursery. I think that I would wonder whether, if we were, if this proposal would go forward, whether their nursery would still remain there, because there would be a lot of other uses, and then we would then lose a nursery, which is, I think is a great use for the village. So I think there's potential for consolidation of property and, you know, much larger development that would attract a lot of traffic. And I don't know about in terms of traffic. I think it's a point to definitely be studied.
May I make a comment? Do I?
Sure.
Two comments, Mark. One, certainly take a look and see if you think there are any other zoning criteria, but I've thought of this for a long time and I don't see any that really works. If you look at the uses in our code, the only real distinction between, and I didn't bring my statistics with it on it. If you look at the office district uses and the village business uses, the only, there is more than 50% similarity or correlation between, for instance, an automobile garage being a special exception in both districts, or a restaurant being a special exception in both districts. There's very little discorrelation between a retail use being prohibited in one and permitted in the other. And the retail use is about the only substantive difference between the two. And the fact that the setbacks are different. But it's the setbacks that I think are critical to my proposal for the overlay zone because the office district setbacks can be kept, modified a little bit, and not run the risk of creating a wall of buildings along that.
Right. I understand that. But the special exception permit or special permits are in every jurisdiction, there is such an element. And it is for a special exception, but to create such a large area for a special exception, I think would, you know, lead people to do spot zoning or.
Well, that's exactly what we're trying to avoid.
You know, I think that's why I'd like to study maybe other ways.
May I comment?
John, one more.
I apologize.
The railroad bridge, I find, it's particularly personal to me because, let me explain this. That there, when the Lynch property was being, when Jerry bought some properties years ago, I had suggested to the trustees at that time that they try and get 10 feet on the road front from them to buy it, to increase the width of North Sea Road from Prospect Street to Bowden Square. Above Prospect Street, there is more than adequate space to have a four-lane road, which is one lane going straight and one turning right.
That's north of the.
North of Prospect, right. The railroad bridge, Mark, was actually only two lanes. And during Joe Romanowski's administration, the railroad needed to upgrade that bridge. And a couple of us got together and he was with them, got to the railroad and asked them to expand the bridge in length, which they did. That bridge will accommodate four lanes of traffic. The bottleneck is not the bridge. The bottleneck is between Prospect Street and Bowden Square. Because once you get to Bowden Square, you now can diffuse the traffic down Windmill Lane, North Sea Road, or east across Bowden Square to North Main Street. So that's already been done. The problem is that this board, the trustees, and nobody else over the last 20 years has seen fit to try and get another 10 feet along North Sea Road from Bowden Square to Prospect Street to do that. And if that had been done, the post office wouldn't be the problem that it is. And by the way, if this does become an overlay zone and the 120 North Sea Road property, which is Smith's and south of it, get into retail, you may be able to provide different access to those properties that would alleviate some of the congestion right now faced by the post office. So my comment to you is that the railroad, the road congestion is actually being solved and it was a lot worse than it is now. I just wanted to provide you with that history.
Thank you.
Sorry, John.
No, I was just going to add, I think the special exception, you know, vehicle is the way to go about it. The concern probably is the control on the special exception use. So there are two ways you can go about a special exception. You can set up a bunch of standards and give the special exception to the planning board or the zoning board of appeals in the village. It's essentially, the zoning board of appeals has special exception authority. Alternatively, and then, and then if you meet the standards, and Bo and Gil will correct me if I'm wrong on any of this stuff, but then if you meet the standards, if this appointed board, zoning board of appeals has it, if you meet those standards, the general standards and the specific standards, you're pretty much entitled to that use. And that's what I see maybe you're concerned about. The other method, which is perfectly allowed, is to have the trustees maintain a special exception standard in this district. And what that does is it broadens the power greatly. As a matter of fact, I don't know the name of the case, but this court of appeals case that says if the special exception standard remains with the trustees, because they have the right to delegate or not delegate anything, they can essentially say no for any rational reason. And maybe.
Rational or irrational?
No, any rational reason. You have a very broad power to say no, because essentially you're asking, it's sort of like, they've retained a bit of, in effect, their zoning power. So I don't know whether or not that does any damages, damage to Bo's thought or anybody else's thought, but if you're concerned about someone coming in and demanding, based upon meeting a criteria, a particular type of use in this overlay district, just keep it with the trustees. It gives them extremely broad power.
Trustees are not there for, they're there as a last resort. That's the way I see.
No, you can, this is very common. For example.
You have a check review board, you have a planning board.
No, no, no. For example, in West Hampton Beach, there are many special exceptions that the trustees maintain, number one. Number two, Village Sagaponak, the trustees are the planning board.
Right, no, I understand.
Okay. I'm not suggesting that you have an over, I'm not suggesting, I think that's a mistake because things get far, every application gets far too politicized. But if you have an overlay district where you need this flexibility, I will tell you, Mr. Punnett's building would be a thriving retail use right now. If the trustees had the authority under a floating zone like this, an overlay district, not a floating zone, overlay district, and the authority to allow those uses and to graft on conditions that would alleviate any concerns about the uses, I think that's the way to do it.
I think here we have some of the greatest legal minds in the village for land use. So I think that would be great for, if maybe ask you to maybe look at whether it's the right vehicle or, and what are the implications?
Well, the only other vehicle is just to change the zone. And then, and I, my guess is that you don't want people being able to go in and say, this is the same as the village business. I'm here, I have a retail use. Give me a building permit and a certificate of occupancy. Really, the only way, other way to do it is to have an overlay district with someone having special exception authority.
Let me give you one example of overlay district that we worked on and proposed to the trustees. We worked on a number of years back on the Meadow Lane overlay district, where there were a number of properties there that formed to be redeveloped or developed as new. Well, this is the stretch of Meadow Lane going all the way to the public park at the end, which is on the bay, Schenckoff Bay on one side, Ocean on the other. And we were primarily dealing with the properties on the Schenckoff Bay side. And most everybody would have to go in front of the zoning board of appeals, requesting variances. There was frustration that nothing's basically happening, there are no standards. We came up with a number of standards for development of those properties that if property owners were to meet those standards, then the zoning board would grant them a variance for development based on those proposed standards.
And not as a right.
Not as a right, as a special exception. Those standards were never actually adopted by the trustees officially. They weren't adopted as a, that zone wasn't created as a special exception zone. But to this day, the ZBA zoning board of appeals uses those informally as a set of standards for granting variances, even though it's not formally adopted as a zoning change. One of the, as mentioned, advantages of special exception versus a change zone is the change zone grants a right to a property owner. And regardless of the village being in agreement or not, once that grant is righted, that's a right. Whereas special exception still leaves the decision of granting a variance. Whereas a special exception still leaves the decision of granting a variance in the hands of the zoning board of appeals. And as we all know, the zoning board of appeals, especially in Southampton, dating back to the days of Dr. No, has, has its reputation for not being an easy board to grant variances. Paul, you, you wanna add?
Yeah, so I guess, um, I'm, you're talking about the answer way before, or at least I personally feel that I'm convinced that it's the right answer or how to make the answer work. So I guess to start with, I think what you're presenting to us is that there's an office district here that is not, is not working. And I assume you can put together a list of, of stats that show, show that, that show what the vacancy rate is among the existing office buildings. That's one set of facts and that I think is important for us to consider. And then there's a second issue is that if it's not working, what is the right answer? And I'm way, 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 way before that I'm ready to say retail is the right answer. Because I, on my guess, I wasn't here in the 1970s, but I'm guessing the reason the zone was created was a very early attempt to concentrate retail development in the village business district. We've just went through a five to eight year effort, depending how you time it, to concentrate the development in the village business district. And if the first action zoning we take is to move retail development away from the village business district, that purely from a planning point of view for a minute, not from a zoning point of view, not from a market point of view, I understand all those things, that's hard for me to get my arms around. So I guess I would encourage a broader look at the district and what other uses might work there because, again, and I think your, your example, which, and I'm sorry to say, say this, from the village's point of view, and I understand not you as a property owner, I do understand that. But from the village's point of view, the fact that that store was, had to go to the village business district is the best thing that's happened in the village business district in 10 years. So that, that is exactly what our zoning was meant to do, was to basically force retailers into the center so that we begin to have a viable center again.
You're not offending, you're not offending me, it was my client.
No, no, I understand that.
He's very happy to go there.
So, so, so I guess the, the question is if the office district isn't working, what is the right answer? And I guess I would encourage a broader look because I just think, and I understand it's 50% or 70% or whatever it is retail now. But I, you know, i- if we're saying that the next time someone's looking at sites on Windmill Lane or sites on North Sea Road, that we're gonna encourage them to go to North Sea Road, that, that is difficult to explain in the context of the planning we've done over the last eight years and the village's master plan, which has been very focused on trying to create more development in the village center. And that Gibbs study was actually done ironically to say, because the Southampton Association was concerned, is there enough retail to justify the rezoning of the village sector? That was the purpose that that study was done for. And the, and the study said, there is at least, they thought, another hundred thousand square feet of retail that could happen. And it doesn't say it has to happen there. But the, the reason that study was commissioned was concerned that we were creating a zoning and there wasn't retail demand. And they think obviously the ultimatum is retail demand. So, so I guess I would ask a few things. Number one is I think any change of zoning here clearly requires traffic analysis because this is the main route or one of the main routes into the village. And if we're gonna do change zoning, we need to look at what that means. And then secondly, I think, you know, to the extent you've made a convincing case that the current zoning doesn't work, I think we really need to look at what the correct options are. Because I think those are two separate issues for us. One is, is the office district zoning work? And I think you're making obviously a, a pretty good case that you don't think it is. And then the question is if it's not working, what is the right answer within the planning that's been going on in this village over the last 10 years? And I would just separate those issues. And so before we start talking about how we make it work, I'd like to first, from a planning point of view, since that's our job, look at what would be the right uses on the street if we could choose, if we're gonna change the current zoning. Which I must say, from my point of view, as a planner, a special exception is a planning change. It's a zoning change. Because it's saying that we think it's okay, from our point of view, under the right circumstances, create more retail. I'm not saying, in the end of the day, we may not say some more retail here is okay. But I just do not think that's the only use out there. And I'm not yet convinced that that use won't have an impact in the village business district, so.
Let me shed a little light.
Can I just add something? I, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that. Do you mean what types of different retail businesses are the correct uses? There isn't anything else. I've been on the receiving end of all the inquiries for the last six or seven years there. There's no other uses. It's people want to rent that building for a use that is not allowed. They see an antique store in the corner of Bowden Square and North Sea Road that is operating and has, you know, however many thousand square feet of space. They want to rent my building and do the same thing. And I have to tell them that they cannot because of some quirk of zoning that precludes them from renting on that side of the street. So I'm just wondering what other sort of uses you think there may be out there? I mean, this is a retail area. There isn't any other use. Do you mean like a museum or something?
I, I think, let me shed some more light on that. It goes back on this report that Gibbs prepared, which was in conjunction with the village and the Southampton Association. And I think that, uh, the focus of it was to fight retail development both in the heart of the village and the proposed supermarket district down Hampton Road. The Gibbs study basically looked at three different radiuses of zones, geographic zones of so-called users or shoppers or people that would, uh, travel to a specific location for, for, for their daily purchases. And they basically, it started from the heart of the village, a walking circle to a larger, about eight, about a mile beyond that, and then a five mile radius. And there's basically this five mile radius is the big radius that people actually travel, make the effort to travel to Southampton Village from this five mile radius for their shopping needs. And, uh, the issue was that if retail is developed outside of the heart of the village business, what would, what effect would have on this five mile radius as far as people coming to the village? And, uh, the 109,000 additional square foot that was proposed as acceptable or something that the village could, uh, uh, expand to because there's demand for it, was based on, uh, this tabulation of, uh, this need, uh, demand of this five mile radius. And that if they were to go within the heart of the village or no more than a mile from that village, this five mile radius still would visit the village of Southampton. If it goes beyond that mile as far as its development, then people would not be visiting this village for additional retail activities. An example, for instance, is that, I know Francis Schmidt's supermarket has complained a lot about competition in the area if another supermarket is developed. Actually, this Gibbs report contradicted that. It said that if, say, as an example, on Hampton Road, a supermarket would be developed and this is within a mile or in the heart of the business district, actually visits to Schmidt's would be increased by 15 to 25% by a development of another supermarket in the village business district. However, if there were to be a development outside of one mile radius, such as the Taco Hall, that up to 25% reduction in retail activity in the village would occur. So, uh, the, the, and then this tabulated type of retails and square footages, how much of that would be expansion of, uh, say, a hardware store, shopping, clothing shop, restaurants and so forth? Up to three additional restaurants, up to, I think, 20,000 additional hardware store. And even those numbers, the way Gibbs described them is that there's few options. One is that existing hardware stores could retool themselves, re-expand within the existing, uh, setup that they have, create, bring in new products and so forth to redefine themselves. Or additional stores could open up. But one of the things that Gibbs report did not address was, uh, the issue of traffic. This was primarily the supply and demand regarding retail, not how it's implemented, what the traffic would, the impact of that would be. They did not venture into studies or recommendations of, uh, how this village could entertain parking or access to these additional 100,000 or so retail activities. And we know, based on our study for the village business district, that as an example, again, in the village business district, we cannot accommodate a supermarket because we don't have the parking track. Simple as that. So, uh, then we look at the areas a mile outside the village, which are the corridors of North Sea Road, the corridor of Hampton Road, and the corridor of Hill Street. Of these three corridors that access the village, which one lends itself most to, uh, development of retail or additional retail square footage? Obviously, I think that based on what Beau you presented, the one that historically has entertained more retail is the North Sea Road. Hampton Road is the second, uh, second street close to that. And finally, Hill Street, which is primarily residential. So obviously, if you were to tabulate or categorize or prioritize additional retail outside the heart of the village business district, North Sea Road would be the number one candidate for, for that. But one thing that, Paul, you mentioned, and I think that we should look into, and this goes back to the issue of standards, that we have to define standards. There are, uh, as part of that, for instance, is that what types of retail can be accommodated on North Sea Road that cannot be accommodated or we do not want accommodated in the village business district? And write up those standards accordingly for those types of retails. So that, uh, once they, they have to meet those standards in order to be eligible for a special exception on North Sea Road. And hence, by doing such thing, shop owners would not simply be closing shop on Main Street or Jobbs Lane because they can get cheaper rents on Hampton Road or, or North Sea Road and move out there. That they would have to entertain or be eligible or meet special expect, uh, special exception standards. Another thing that I think is worth looking into, and this goes again to the issue of traffic, obviously, north of the railroad track, we have that four lane over there. The corridor south of the tracks to Bowden Square is where we have the major issues with the post office, with Schmidt's on the other side. Another thing is that basically we could, as part of this introduction of a special exception zone overlay district and the uses and standards associated with it, maybe some taking of property frontage from property lands along this corridor would be part of that change of zone. So that in the future, that section of the road could be expanded by another.
And have sidewalks.
And have sidewalks and expanded in that sense. So that could go hand in hand with adoption of this special exception overlay district. And it would go to a vote and property owners all along that corridor would be voting, or expressing their, uh, desires to the trustees and the trustees would be adopting it accordingly or not. So I, I think that, uh, this, this, uh, study of these standards is definitely part of this. Are the same standards that we have for the office business district as far as parking, do they, uh, could they be transferred to this overlay district standards? Or do we need to increase that or reduce that? I'm not sure, that has to be looked into. But, uh, uh, one, one, one key element is that, you said more than 75% of the corridors are already retail.
West side.
West side, 50%, 51% on both sides.
How are you counting Lynch's in that analysis?
Excuse me?
How are you counting Lynch's in that analysis?
The linear distance of the.
As a retail use?
As a retail use.
Do you know what it is without Lynch's?
No.
Okay.
But, but looking at these maps that you've shown us.
By the way, Paul, it doesn't make any difference what Lynch's is because it's like a Home Depot or a nursery. You can have 30 acres of nursery land with your stock. All you need is one cash register.
Is that a permitted use in the office district?
No.
The nursery?
The nursery is, but not the retail nursery here.
But the nursery is.
A nursery is, if you're growing trees, but they're not growing trees.
And definitely that's a retail.
Absolutely.
Function over there. But one of the advantages of these properties such as Lynch's and a few others is compared to the village business district, is the size of the lots. These are much larger lots. These are much larger buildings that lent themselves to another type of retail that not necessarily can be accommodated in the heart of the village business district. And that would be an element that would go into these standards that one would have to meet in order to be eligible for the special exception in front of the ZBA for adoption of the change of zone or accepting of the zone.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment on this. You came before us last month about the hotel district.
No, I did not.
No, you was.
That was another.
That was another.
That was another time, but.
No, that was another entity.
That was another entity, I just would bring this up. But the fact is that that's always been hotel space. Why did they ever zone residential? I can remember this, this whole corridor, because I grew up and I lived in this area and I walked these streets. There was one office and that was Morley Agency. That was the only office on that whole corridor. I can tell you, starting from the cemetery, you had a rooming house that was owned by Frank. I forgot the last name, it was a Polish name. He had a grocery store next to that, then it was Palmer's Liquor Store. Then you had, uh, Morley Agency, it was a vacant lot in between it, but there was a house there at one time, they tore it down. Then you had, um, the office building that where Morley started from, Mrs. Napiowski's house, then you had Kennedy Dry's warehouse that was there. Then on the corner was a Sunoco gas station. Bob Wiggams had his auto body shop. Across the street was JJ.
Which corner is this we're talking about?
We're talking about coming up to the corner.
The north part of the triangle.
Right, the triangle, right. Then you had J. and J. Bennett's Construction Company. Then you had Dury and Bad, a heavy construction company. I mean, heavy construction, right? And then you had, uh, the Davis family. And that house was originally the first, uh, that was the first parsonage in the Methodist church on that side. And it was residential houses all the way up till you got to your property. Soon as you got past your property, there was H. and L. Williamson's block plant. They would manufacture cement blocks and selling all sorts of masonry materials. Then there was residential houses till you got to Lynch's. Lynch's is there. Across the street from Lynch's, where Oppling raised, was a paint store. Most people forgot about that, the building's been torn down. And then you had the Long Island Lightning Company on both sides of the street. And behind Punished Building was Gil Martin's Coal Company. We used to play in that yard. In fact, they got in trouble sliding down that coal pile one day. I won't say what happened to me, but. And then once you pass underneath the railway trestle with that old houses, there was some type of business in there, I don't remember what it was. Across the street was, um, Mayor Dufran.
It wasn't a business, it was a house that burned down.
The big house is still there.
Not on the west side of the street.
No, no, you're talking about Miller Road. That was Robinson's. They were in school and there were five children lost, lost their lives in that house. But across from, between Miller Road and Hillcrest was a lumberyard. That was our mayor's.
Terry and Dufran was on the west side of the street.
Dufran, right. But across the street on the other side, the east side, the big house, there was some type of business in there, but I don't remember what it was. And then you had, uh, two residential homes. And then it was a vacant lot that at, um, oh, I'm trying to get the name. And then where, uh, O'Shea has his office, directly north of him was a saloon, a bar. And that was, uh.
Oh, come on.
He bought the property from them. Do you remember who Jimmy, Jimmy bought the property from?
No, I don't.
And then across the street from that, you had the African American barber shop. And then it was, uh, basically farmland and residential houses all the way. It was no County Road 39 in those days. When you got to the corner, you had a golf gas station, you had a flying a gas station. That was it. That's the history of the area. But there was no office except for one office on the street. What puzzles me is why did they ever name it office? It's just like, why did they ever put that up area on Hill Street?
There was a wave of.
Residential, when it was always been hotel.
There was a wave of conservatism back in 74. The economy had gone through a four or five year expansion and, and people got a little bit conservative about where the future of the village was. But it hasn't, or. May I say something to comment about Paul? Paul, I don't know whether you're trying to subclassify by your use of the word standards in C Macs, whether you're classifying uses or not. But if you look at the code, the uses are a nursery, an automobile garage, a telephone company, et cetera, et cetera. the uses are a nursery, an automobile garage, a telephone company, et cetera, et cetera. And then it goes to retail uses and stores and that's it. It doesn't specify jewelry versus clothing versus Michael Kors versus whatever. If you get into that kind of refinement, I don't know where that takes anybody. Purpose of zoning, I agree with John, is to foster business and development, not restrict it. The free market will take care of this road as a special exception zone. It is a self-limiting overlay zone because of the setbacks. If it was wall to wall, I could understand the concern, but it's not. It'll be thirty feet in the front and forty-five feet maximum on the sides. And that greatly restricts the use of those properties. There might be some consolidation, yes, but it's never going to approach the number that was suggested in the Gibbs Report. That is just a fantastic number. And you're not going to think, if you, if you think that you want to restrict things on North Sea Road, how could you even consider putting such a zone on Hampton Road or Hill Street or any other place? If this is the kind of stuff that you wanted to restrict on Hampton Road. And I've only referred to Hampton Road myself, east of Pine Street. West of Pine Street, it is wall to wall businesses. But there's no parking, as you know, on any of those. These, these properties have to provide their own parking because there is no municipal parking or other lot like Hildress. So when you get through the computation of the one hundred eighty square feet per, one space or one eighty square feet, plus the setbacks, you've greatly restricted the ability of these to even function as retail zones. All I'm saying is, you can look at this and say, well, we need this and we need that and we need this study and all that. There it is. Does the village want to move forward or not? And I cite you the following example. Go to Route Fifty-Eight in Riverhead right now and go to Home Depot, which is a viable national company, a very vigorous company. And you drive out of the south entrance to that complex and you come to a traffic light and right across the street is a Lowe's. Their major competitor. Did anybody say to Lowe's, oh, well, you can't compete with Home Depot because the zoning is such? No. And the Lowe's is only open in the last year. So this is not a situation where we're trying to look and say, businesses are going to be taken away. We want North Sea Road to be viable and we want the village center to be viable. And again, you're not, you don't have fifteen foot wide stores on this road to compete with this. You're going to have different kinds of uses, which will not be in direct competition. And I would also encourage the following, that is, that you consider acting as a board to somehow get the necessary ten feet of land or more between Bowden Square and Prospect Street to make that road wider. If you're planning commission, what's going on with this? If you haven't thought of that already, because that's where the bottleneck is. And I don't think people have to vote it on the street. But if you had a major redo of any of those properties, then is the time to say, well, can you give us another ten feet? And that project may take ten or fifteen years, but we need it for fifty years down the road and that's what this is looking to. It's not looking to next season or tomorrow when you walk down these streets and find nobody on these streets because all these pop-up stores can't survive through the winter. You're looking at more viable, sustainable businesses in an area that is now an underutilized and wasting asset. If you'd like me to do anything further, I'd be glad to. I don't know what your board is thinking of as to how to move forward with this, but I'd like you to please do so and, and do it with some degree of timeliness. And I'm available to, to add whenever I can to this. But I think it's pretty certain after spending a lot of time with this and only looking at forty-seven parcels, I've just not seen a lot of different machinations of this whole, whole equation.
Can I ask a question? Is residential permitted in this town?
Upon special exception.
As a special exception.
Pre-existing house is permitted, but a new one is special exception.
But special exception is allowed.
And why? Is it a special exception in this town?
On retail specifically.
No, no, I'm not talking about retail.
In an office district, a new residential use is a special exception. That's Bob. Who's the guy? He did one up on the street that's parallel to, to White Street. Bob Whitman. His house, that was a special exception.
It just seems to me, when honestly, again, purely from a planning point of view, I agree with, I certainly agree with C Mac, the case can be made. There are retailers who will not come into the village. And you can talk about whether or not this is a good place for them. And then, but the other thing that strikes me, if office isn't working, is whether or not some of these parcels would make sense as residential parcels. And that's what strikes me honestly more than anything else. As a planner, not asking as a lawyer, just as a planner, if what we want is more close in residential in the village, I really think about whether or not that's one of the things we'd want to encourage here. Purely from a planning point of view.
I think, what I think what Paul is saying is that we, we need to look at other alternatives. I understand that you are presenting something that's.
Well, I'm not, I'm not presenting this for you to now use it as a general overall view of the village. I would have hoped in the last three or four years, that's what you've done. I'm making a specific presentation about this. On, near the parcel that I have, about ten or fifteen years ago, somebody had just built a house and it was moved off there because of its commercial utility. I don't know what Gibbs did to come to the conclusion that the village could accommodate a hundred and nine thousand square feet. If there's not some credibility in their report. And if one thinks there is credibility in the report, then where is that space going to come from? And it's not going to come from Hampton Road, Hill Street or any other place because this area is all locked in. That's about the only viable place for it. So either somebody has to say they agree in principle with expanding retail space and taking this asset and doing something with it, or you're not. But I don't see myself, and I think that the attorneys here locally have some degree of land planning intelligence about this, that anybody wants to start to put houses on North Sea Road.
I can think of, in my lifetime, six houses have been torn down on that street.
Yeah, Jerry Lynch's, those were two houses there.
I, with all due respect. If we look at the next ten to twenty years in this country and certainly in the east end with an aging popul- populization, we, I certainly would argue that there is going to be more demand for close-in housing. And if I could think of an area with some of these very deep parcels where housing could happen, I would think this is one place. I may be wrong. I'm not arguing that I'm right. But I, I, I am not personally prepared to say retail is the only use before we really study this car corridor.
You know, you need forty thousand square foot per house under the Health Department codes. This is in a groundwater management zone. For every house, for every single family residence, you need forty thousand square feet. It's just from an economic point of, let alone the fact that you'd be building housing on, on, on a corridor that's all commercial, mostly residential. It's from a planning point of view, you don't put your residential along corridor like this.
And you're not single residents.
Excuse me?
And not single family.
Nobody want to build a house.
Well, the multi-family is even more difficult.
By the way, Mark, I've said last time, and I'll say it again, your board ought to move forward and do something about putting condos on Hampton Road, east of Lewis Street.
No, I think it's a weird idea.
Well, go.
That's a perfect place for a house.
Go, not here.
East of Lewis. Someone did build a house on North Sea Road. It was one of the most misguided efforts I think I've ever seen in, in my memory here, where they took a pre-existing house and, and redeveloped it and built a very nice house. Spent a lot of money, from what I can tell, developing this thing. And it sat on the market and sat and sat and sat and sat. And they sold it for what has to be less than whatever it is that someone paid for the land and developed.
Yeah, and that was the one that was moved off the street up toward White Street.
The cross from O'Shea's office, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I don't think they, I don't think they, I don't think they sold it for what they cost it though.
I think that one of the key ways to look forward is we started to look into defining what the center of the village wants to be. And that was on the premise of what the old village's so-called Main Street, Job's Lane, was as a preliminary example for us. What we haven't looked at is the entry to the village. This corridor, and we have, as I said, the Hill Street entry, the Hampton Road entry and this North Sea Road entry. From what Bob just walked us through, North Sea was the more industrial activities on that street.
Yeah, I forgot one thing. The public house or Herb McCarthy's, whoever remembers it. And it used to be his mother had the place at the back they called the coal bin. You could go in the back there and have the same beer and hamburger for half the price.
Can I just add one more thing? You know, this building on, that we have on North Sea Road, again, it's probably my better judgment. I was charmed by its history and its aesthetic appearance. And unlike most builders, I did not knock it down. I worked with it because I just think it's, it's an important building and it's nice for the village. Spent a tremendous amount of money getting it to where it needs to be. And now I'd like it to be self-supporting. Not looking to make a profit even. I'd like it to be self-supporting, which right now is far from it. And I just can't. And that's why I'm here.
Well, I think that's a valid point. And, and we, we should look at it from the perspective of how to define the entry to the village. And there is a different scale to that compared to the Village Business District, the heart of the village. The rhythm of approach towards development on that is different. Good portion of it already is developed. But we have to also look at it that is, for instance, Lynch's going to operate as such for the next fifty years or so? If this is a special exception overlay district, what kind of opportunities they would have? And if that would be the case, would that benefit the village or not? And that might be the case that it would benefit the village if they shift to something else. As I said, some of these properties are larger properties that lend themselves to things that cannot happen in the Village Business District. Two Hundred North Sea Road is one of them. The office building that's been sitting vacant north of the bank on the other side, that's another one. These are properties that lend themselves to fantastic or tremendous parking affordability. They, they provide parking, which we do not have in the village center. There could be a, a, a day where people could actually have campuses of parking and, and some sort of transportation providing them access to the heart of the village from these parkings. Like a, like almost a shuttle, basically, if you may. I mean, I, I'm really projecting myself here. But I think that the element of widening of the road to create this entrance, this is the main and artery to the village. And definitely, there is a bottleneck between the south of the, south of the train to Bowden Square. At Bowden Square, it splits and that can act by itself, provides two means of access to the village. But this corridor, as part of the widening and taking from this village property owners, lends itself also to redefinition of the types of activities and uses on that street. This is the give and take. I mean, I, mind you, I have been helping in designing the African American Museum to the north of this. This is a street that we want to get away from the types of McDonald's and those types of retails to something that would be more appropriate to historic village development. And I respect the, the judgment that preservation of something like Two Hundred North Main Sea does benefit the village because that gives character to the, and defines the history of the village. And we have to make them economically viable. Otherwise, they'll fall apart. Every time that I read about demolition of a building in this village, the one aspect that is not discussed is that the one major reason is economics of it. An economy rhymes in that sense. People, we, we don't live in a society that a, a central government keeps things the way they should. It's in the hands of individuals and how they prosper. And we have to provide that prosperity for, for, for these property owners. And this village in that sense benefits from it. So I suggest we take a look at, and again, it comes down to definition of these standards. We have to look at what are the Village Business District allowable uses? How some of these uses may or should, or may not be adjusted for adoption as set of standards for this overlay district? And also part of that would be the proposal for expansion of the roadway in this corridor as part of the adoption of these special standards. I think that if we undertake this in the next meeting or two, we should be able to propose something to the trustees to that extent. And maybe also, if I can add, just maybe also to look at whether the northern section and the southern section should be looked at together or independently. But I think there are, the railroad is a dividing line. Maybe that special district is, overlay district is just to the south of.
You need to be careful about that. It's your entrance to the village. And I know a lot of us that are on that street north of the railroad station would like to make it better. Okay, but we're limited. And I think if you cut off at the rail, at the south side and leave us as orphans on the other side, people are going to come in and they're going to see, it's not, you know, it's not going to be nice. You have to include, you have to include us all, that whole area.
But it may be viewed as two different sections. I don't think it needs necessarily to be treated the same way.
Traffic ones, absolutely. But when it comes to, you know, special exception zoning, I think that they, they should be in the same realm. Perhaps you could have different setbacks for one or the other. We have, there's more, way more room on the north side. I mean, I have a very large piece there.
I don't think there's a need for expansion of the roadway on the north side.
Absolutely not.
The issue is on the south side of it, so.
I've seen time and time again, all this corridor parcel where you are, parcel. I've had probably twenty increase upon this parcel all the time. People wanting to put money. And not, not trinket stores. People wanting to put serious businesses and substantial infusion of money into this corridor. And you have to tell them, it's office district, you can't do anything there. Unless you're happy with that pre-existing use. It's, it's, you have to do something. You have to do it quickly.
I think I've been told by the building department, don't apply for building permit. You know, you can't, you, you're not going to be able to do anything because you're non-conforming, pre-existing. So, you know, when I've wanted to do some, some work on the buildings. So I'm just kind of sitting here waiting guys. You can't do much.
No, I, I, I think time is of the essence in the sense of the address. I mean, this is a natural thing to, after looking at the center of the village, to look at the features to that sector. And as I said, one of the key properties that was purchased by the CPF Fund and joined with a property that was owned by the village, the African American Museum, it's going to be opening up on the street on the north side of the train trellis. And definitely, the character of this roadway has changed. But to this state, because there hasn't been a lack of vision as to what it should look like or what type of activity it should have, it's been haphazard between the post office, which clearly is the epitome of this haphazardness and lack of vision as to what it wants to be. I mean, when they came up to our village and, and showed our plans, we couldn't say, well, we don't like this plan because of A, B, and C. Because we didn't have any vision of what this street wants to be. And I think we should define that. Lynch's as such, I think that as much as great use it is, but it could improve itself as a facility, same to it.
Yes, but it can't because they're, they're hamstrung.
I'm talking about the vision that is to be defined. There's certain elements that has to be preserved. The bank, the North Sea Road as a building, as architecture. But there's others that as a use and including these historic buildings need to be addressed as to what this corridor wants to look like. And I think we should look at the Village Business District because again, this is a component of Southampton. It, you can't say that Southampton really starts at Main Street and ends at Job's Lane. When people take that right, actually, they're entering the village of Southampton. And when they take that right, they say, well, where is this historic village? They can't find it for another three quarters of a mile. And we should define this three quarter of a mile as part of the historic village of Southampton. Basically create the impetus to redevelopment effects in that sense. So I suggest we look into the zoning of the Village Business District. We derive from that set of standards and use that as the definition of this special exception. And I personally think that the special exception. I personally think that the special exception overlay district is the best approach, because it still is not granting it as of right, but the village ZBA would have a say on it if we want to even further the option of going to the trustees as the, as the ultimate grant of that special exception. I'm not sure of that, because I always think that once you do that, then it becomes a political issue and not a planning issue. I, I personally am against that. I think that if it's a good idea, it shouldn't be dealing with politics. It's a planning issue. So I'd leave it to the hands of the ZBA and the, and the planning board.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
There's one more business district.
Bennett mentioned is that there's two options as far as overlay districts. One is that.
You have a set of standards and you go to the ZBA, or you go to the.
Without a set of standards, you go to the trustees, and trustees make a, make a, basically call and judgment on it, without any standards, then basically that's granted by the trustees.
What do you think? What is the answer?
Which one?
Absolutely completely false. The idea that, that is, that the trustees can basically do what they want and not get challenged in court is ridiculous.
No, that's obviously, yes, that's right.
That is exactly what happens. Everyone goes to court every time the trustees turn it down, because trustees are not planners, so they.
Absolutely.
The judge, the decision is not.
It's like the worst thing you could do.
And whenever such things have been presented to the trustees, they're always baffled that, okay, on, based on what should we make our judgment? And the only way that then the judgment is clear for them is basically based on the votes, or the hands that are out there in front of them. And this should not be, the planning of this village should not be basically on that premise. And by the way, this overlay special district is going to be, with the set of standards, the approach, they would be meeting these standards. And once they meet these standards, then they can go in front of the zoning board of appeals.
Then you're going.
No, it's not a right. Request for variance.
Making request.
Request for variance from the existing.
But if you meet the standards.
What's an example of standards? That is, apart from what the zoning already provides for, and what the overlay district would allow, what do you mean by standards?
Use an example, and I think it's the right or wrong thing. You could say no stores of less than ten, ten thousand square feet.
Exactly. So the, the, in, in the village business district, we have retail stores are permitted use. We could put as a standard that no smaller than ten thousand square feet of a store should be part of these standards. And if you don't meet it, then the granting of the variance is not helpful. Similar to what we did in the Meadow Lane. In the Meadow Lane, we had a specific set of setbacks and height restrictions, and footprints as far as lot coverage, that were not part of the zoning over there.
That's what I was saying.
That's different, that's just a different zoning.
But it's not untypical. Most villages and towns have many, I should say many, most, many, many villages and towns have specific rules on retail in particular, because of all the concerns people have, that are very specific. And say, you know, just to make a dumb example, you can't put, put a hardware store here, because they want hardware stores to be elsewhere. Those are common. And if you're gonna do an overlay district, it would not be unusual anyway. Look in the city, you have the Fifth Avenue Special District, where you have an overlay that doesn't permit airline ticket officers. Because they were, believe it or not, in nineteen sixty-five, they thought the whole street was gonna become airline ticket offices.
Or even, even banks.
Exactly, remember?
Even banks.
Right, banks, and they don't, don't, don't allow banks in that zone.
Exactly.
You only, only.
That's where Republic National Bank had to put the bank downstairs.
Of defining the uses, I think. You really should let the marketplace define.
Well, I mean, let's, 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 take a reverse point of it. In the village business district, we specifically called for elimination, or not elimination, for the, the real estate office on the ground floor not to be an allowable use on Main Street and Jobslane. Pushing them to basically where?
Second floor.
Newtian and, and second floors. So this could be a relief, for instance, this corridor could be a relief for real estate businesses.
But real estate businesses are on Main Street, they are allowed.
No, I'm talking about.
No.
Right now, right now.
Non-conforming grandfather. If they move from that location, they cannot reoccupy that location on the ground floor on Main Street.
I didn't think that passed.
It did pass.
Yes, it did. We passed that. So where would they go as an option, that they would still be on a corridor that is a viable commercial corridor?
What I, what I don't wanna see is, use a stupid example again. J. Crew says, oh my God, I could go to North Sea Road, I could take five thousand square feet, it's half the rent, and you know what? People will drive to me. That's exactly what I don't wanna see happen, and what I really am concerned.
Yeah, but what?
Because what he said, by the way, is completely accurate. I'm doing a retail lease right now in the village, and the price has gone up twenty-five dollars in the, a foot in the last year. So are retailers looking now outside the village? Yes. And so the question is, if you give them a cheap, easy option, we're gonna see Main Street empty out. That's not the.
But there's the other, the other side of, of the, of the metal, that Main Street will empty out because it's too expensive and they got nowhere to go, and the business just.
No, no, but, but our goal was, if they can't be, but Ed, Ed, our, our goal was if they can't be on Main Street, they're gonna, we're gonna push them towards Newton Street and Whittail Lane. That was the whole idea.
It's a different, it's a different kind of retail. I mean, the retail, the retail that's on Main Street, it's, you walk to it, it's shopping, it's different. When you start going to North Sea Road, you're talking about driving to it, you can't really walk to it. It's a different kind of retail. So I, I don't think.
Are there antique stores on North Sea Road?
Antique stores, yes.
Yeah.
There are antique stores.
Could there be antique stores on Whittail Lane?
Sure.
So, it's the same type of retail.
Yeah, so.
So what I'm saying is, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna permit.
It's not, it's not all like that.
If we're gonna permit new retail, I, I mean, I have a real problem.
I mean, there's only, you only can fill up so many spaces on North Sea Road. So I mean, it's not like you're gonna empty out Main Street.
Well, but, but I disagree very strongly.
Maybe something will move.
I disagree very strongly. Lynch's, clearly the pressure on Lynch's to leave, if you make retail unpermitted use, is gonna be very high.
Yes, they will leave.
Very high, there's no doubt. Do I think Lynch's is great for that corridor? I personally do. So, on the other hand, if you limit, I think, building what CMX said, if you limit the type of retailers, then you make it less likely that that's gonna, if you said to me, well, you wanna put a supermarket on North Sea Road, I would be fine. If you said, we're gonna create five little stores, I would say you're beginning to change what happens to the village. So.
There are a couple of uses, for instance. One is, again, a small supermarket. I mean, reset set of standards as far as the overlay supermarket district, which was, one of them was the size of the supermarket. The other one was the location of the supermarket, that it had to be on the County Road Thirty-Nine frontage. It had to be no more than twenty thousand square feet of a store. So we can set up certain standards for supermarkets on down this street. We can, restaurants is another use. North Sea Road could accommodate a restaurant.
Right, be great, be terrific.
Why not? If they can get the Health Department approval for it, I think that that's a perfect use that can go down on that street.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So that's another use.
I think we should, let's, maybe discuss it and.
Yeah, but I don't think we should start defining too much.
Well, what, what, but the point that Paul is making is that if J. Crew has the option of paying, I mean, of course, there's two different issues here. And that is that in the heart of Southampton Village, we have pedestrian traffic. We don't drive to them.
That's what I said, that's what I said. It's a different type of retail.
A, a, a J. Crew, when they decide that, okay, if we move to North Sea Road, we pay twenty-five, thirty dollars a square foot less, but they won't get the same foot traffic over there. So.
Except if you put, again, look at zoning in the ten to twenty, thirty-year components. You now have, I believe fifty percent of the street, by the way, is now retail. So then the other fifty percent becomes retail. You change the dynamic of that street. So will J. Crew in ten to twenty years say, I could make it on that street? Yeah, I think they would. So the que, the question I have is, if we're gonna open up.
Somebody else will move in where J. Crew was. I mean, that's all. Somebody else will move in where J. Crew was.
Not necessarily.
I mean, look at Fifth Ave, besides Fifth Ave, you moved out.
The dynamics.
And somebody else moved in. I mean.
How long did it take?
It didn't take that long.
But, but again, let's take Pottery, that's actually a good example.
Didn't take that long.
What if Pottery Barn could have gone to North Sea Road? They would not have gone to Saks. And absolutely certain of that.
No, you know something? Being on, on Main Street and Hampton Road, it, it gives a lot more cachet than being up on Nor, North Sea Road, let me tell you. I think Pottery Barn looks a lot better where they are.
We need to define what we want to do.
I mean, it's a different type of retail. I mean, retail, they look at images, they look at foot traffic.
But if you said to me, let me, let me, let me use a better example. If you said to me.
I don't think you're gonna, I don't think you're gonna take away that much business from Main Street. It's a different type of look and feel.
If you said to me Restoration Hardware wants to do a twenty thousand square foot store in Southampton, which they do, and you opened up North Sea Road to that, that would be great.
Yeah.
Because it's very hard to accommodate the village.
Of course, it's big, it's basic, that's what you're gonna get.
Right.
You're not gonna get the little mom and pops.
If you said to me Williams, Williams and Omo.
Minimum square footage on the store. That fifteen thousand square foot and up is, goes into the square, the rest part of the standards.
Right.
Oh, you have to see what the buildings are, how they're set up, of course.
No, you have to look at actually the size of the lots, because the buildings can always be.
Yeah, but, but you know, you, you don't have to force people to knock down their buildings to make retail. They gotta be able to use what they got too. So if you start making standards that forces them to knock them down, because otherwise they can't do anything anyway, we're gonna go a little crazy now.
But, but on the other hand, if you say we're gonna allow more retail, and buildings that are now office become retail, then smaller buildings might become more competitive for office. Right?
In the heart of the village.
Also on North Sea Road.
Also on North Sea.
Right. I mean, the irony, by, by the way, of this, is there's a lot of office on North Sea Road. There's a bank, there's a major bank building on North Sea Road, there's law firms on North Sea Road. It's not like there's no office.
There's an office building there, it may be empty, but there's an office.
That's, that's about it.
No, but, but also.
The beauty of the overlay is that at a certain point, you can also allow or not allow.
Right, 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 right. I agree.
So I mean, and, and I was gonna make that point, you know, everybody made points that then was what I wanted to say, so I didn't open up my mouth at a certain point. But, you know, with this overlay, if you have also a problem with traffic, you can decide not to allow certain things in order not to create the traffic jams. Now, CMX's suggestion, which I was also thinking, is, of course, let's, let's, people, owners there want to have a benefit, good. Give us something in return, and let's be able to make that road. I mean, there's so many things, but I'd be very careful about, you know, about limiting the types of use. I, I've never been a believer of that.
But I feel that that special exception really, road is, opens up to a lot of litigation.
Well, let's ask.
Litigation, wow.
Yes, because open exception, special exception. I think that what we need to, to get a better grasp of how the special exception works, is that the next meeting, we'll ask the village attorney, Ripley Pissus, to expand on the special exception.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's a very good idea.
I think that that, that's something, also between now and the next meeting, we look at.
I don't remember how that north end of North Sea Road got widened.
And that comes down to.
When waves and cement block closed down.
My guess is it's part of the County Thirty.
I think it should be, I think.
That comes down to, as far as defining the set of standards, is that if we look at the village's business district, which is the center of the village, obviously, Main Street and Jobslane, there is a rhythm and, and consistency of size of stores, based on the size of the lots. We see what that number is in average. We see what kind of a store, such as, for instance, Restoration Hardware, as far as a need, where could it go in the heart of the village? And, and that would basically start defining this special exception categorization. The other thing that we have to look at is that we have right now three lanes on this so-called narrow section of the road. We have to take from one or both sides of the street to expand that.
Probably just one side, because you got the post office. You're not gonna take anything from the post office.
Uh, no, that's, we can't.
Huh?
Absolutely not.
You're not gonna take anything from the post office.
You can't, unless they want to.
Unless they want to.
So you only can do it on one side.
The post, the post office does not want that piece of land in front. They have a hard time.
Exactly. No, I would put it differently. I would put it differently. I'm dealing with the post office now. The only thing they care about is money. It's all they care about.
Yes.
They care about nothing else. They don't care about the mail, they don't care about anything, they care about layout. I'm really serious. So, the question's gonna be, they're gonna say, how much will you pay me to take that piece? I mean, if you paid them, they would, if you paid them to buy the post office, they would sell it to you tomorrow. Seriously. This was the, literally the last post, do you know this was literally the last post office built in America? Seriously, seriously. And then, and you know, after it was, the day it was opened, I saw them later that day at a meeting, and they all, I said, oh my God, you were out of Southampton. I looked at Southampton, they said, we don't understand how that post office got approved. We have no idea why it got built. You know, demand is gonna go down by fifty percent in the next ten years. We can't figure out how we ended up with a brand-new post, bigger post office.
That's an excellent supermarket.
That could be a home depot.
Right, right.
That's a supermarket.
It's a great supermarket.
If, if the, if the parking is improved.
Right.
So if I may ask all members to look into this thing and start through emails responding to one another with a set of standards.
So we can have a little meeting in a couple of weeks.
Yes, of course, we could have that, sure. And then we present these things at the next meeting. And then from there, we can draft a memo and present it to the trustees.
Okay, motion, George John?
A second.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.